This meeting is being recorded.
Which includes everything posted to the chat, both publicly and privately, and I will hand it over to President Ziegler.
Good afternoon. So the agenda for this meeting is specifically the audit report. And I believe we have a audit representative here. Justin. If you have any comments, I think I just saw an email from you with some answers to manager Cook's questions.
Yeah, I just forwarded that to President Ziegler. So he has been in correspondence with Manager Cook on some of the questions he had. And Audit and Finance Committee, as you're aware, met two weeks back to with Abdo and Associates to have them go through it. But we'd have Justin just give a brief presentation on any findings. Answer questions to the best of his ability at this time, and July 1st is the deadline. So. Manager Pedersen, I'm glad you could join us. I know that you're extremely busy these days. So thank you for making time.
Excuse me, Mr. President, Manager Cook.
Manager Cook.
It just, I don't know what the right motion is. Is anybody else having their audio or anything cutting in and out?
No, no.
Okay, well, if you wouldn't mind then giving me a minute, I'd like to leave and come back on.
Yeah, because you're off camera as well, Manager Cook. I don't know what's going on there.
That's a good question, too. Okay, I'm gonna leave and see if I can come back, okay?
Okay, while we're waiting for Manager Cook, can we just take a quick roll call? I'm here.
Can Amy take it, sir? Who should take it?
There, maybe Amy can take it.
Sure, so President Ziegler.
Here.
Manager Pedersen. Manager Crafton.
And Manager Cook should be coming back in right now.
Now do that Scott Sobeck is available.
Can you hear us, Manager Cook?
I can hear you. I'm trying to figure out why my video would be messed up.
We're getting a blue screen.
Yes, I see that. I see everything, everything that you see.
Never seen a blue screen before on a Zoom. I've seen a lot of green screens, but.
So is any experts out there?
No quote.
Fortunately not. It almost looks like there's something over your screen, or if you have multiple cameras.
Oh, I think I know what the problem is. Okay, hang on just a minute. Thank you. Let me see if I can fix that.
While we're waiting, should I, I might try and present my screen just to get that housekeeping piece of it out of the way, too, to make sure everyone can see.
Right.
Yes, it's great.
There you are, Manager Cook.
Great, now everybody can.
Oh, there you are.
Years of wear and tear.
President Ziegler, if I may interject just for a moment. Tom, I'm gonna get your last name wrong, Duval.
Duval.
Duval is here. He was recently appointed by the Hennepin County Commissioners to fill. President Ward's seat. He is not officially part of the board yet. That will, of course, come at the swearing in on the 13th, but wanted to introduce him to the board. And say welcome, Tom. I owe you a phone call, and I will get in touch with you today, and we can discuss next time.
Very good, thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Okay, so I believe that Justin was gonna give us an overview.
Yeah, well, thanks for having me at your meeting. I appreciate it. I will just go over a brief PowerPoint presentation and take any questions at the end. So. I will just get right into it and go through our introduction. Again, not a huge introduction or huge presentation, but I will be going over the audit opinion. The responsibility of us as an audit firm and over our opinion that we did get or give the Watershed District, and we will just go over the. Again, the 509 Implementation Fund, just basically the whole entity's results. So again, the reason I'm here and the reason the Watershed District needs an audit is they are required to get it audited by the state of Minnesota. We are required to give an opinion on the audited financial statements and related internal controls that relate to those financial statements. So. We did issue a clean, unmodified audit opinion, which is the opinion that the Watershed District is looking for for 2021. So again, a positive result. So. The way we arrived at that result is we did. Our audit mainly remotely, but we did look at the same transactions related to paying of bills. Paying of employees, looking at the property taxes, grant revenue, under grant revenue. Accounts payable, things of that nature, what the board's getting to make decisions. So. With that, we are happy to say that we did not have any internal control-related findings in 2021 either. So I think a positive result and even an improvement from the prior years. So. As part of our audit, we are also required to report on Minnesota State statutes and legal compliance. The Office of the State Auditor does put guides on their website that we are required to test as part of our audit. A couple of examples of some of those things that we do test are timely payment of claims and conflicts of interest or lack thereof with any of the board members. So again. No legal compliance findings to be reported in 2021, which again is a positive result and improvement from the prior years. So we do just note that there was, again, that official finding in the prior year related to timely payment of claims, which is, again, was a legal compliance finding, basically stating that. All claims need to be paid within 35 days of receipt. The Watershed District purchased a stamp and more or less had no issues with the payments outside of 35 days in that statute timeline in 2021. So overall, a good improvement there. So just sharing some results from an improvement from last year. So the next slide, we just do get into kind of some of the results, looking at the overall fund balance. We see on the screen here is that the Watershed's budget. In comparison to the fund balance, so it is offset by one year. Our goal is to kind of show what the reserve level is in comparison to the future year's budget to show. What percentage on hand there is to pay those future resources or future budgetary expenditures. So. Over the past five years, again, that that fund balance percentage has gone from anywhere from 70 to 96% and kind of hovering in that 80% range in the last few years. And again, I think it's just a good start to show kind of the overall budgetary amounts over the past five years and what things project in 2022, what's 7 million. So how we arrived at that, the percentage, I may go back just real quick, 78% is the fund balance percentage. That we have at the end of 2021. So how we arrived at that 5.5 million is we, you know, we do show a chart here that does just include the final budgeted numbers in comparison to the actual amount. So. I guess something to point out, too, is that we've had discussions about this with staff and managers as well, just noting that. With Watershed Districts, there is multi-year budgeting. Sometimes resources are received in prior years or even are expected to be received in future years for expenditures that. That take place in individual years. So just something to keep in mind there. So. The the final budget did come in with with that expected decrease of about $3 million. Again, that's somewhat misleading just with the multi-year spending and budgeting, but. Overall, actual results for 2021. So we start with the revenues. Again, revenues were under budget by about $500,000 there. And again, I think the main reasons for that under under receipt there would be just some of the partnership funds. Maybe due to time into some of the expenditures and completion of projects, as well as some of the the grant revenue, about 100,000. So those are the big reasons for the, you know, the under under budget for the revenue. So again, as we look at the expenditures, again, expenditures are under budget by about $3 million. So. Again, as I already mentioned, some of that relates to some of the completion of projects, multi-year budgeting. Excuse me, as well as some of the projects that I did know that were a little bit underspent compared to the budget specifically, were Upper Riley and Bluff Creek. So. Again, at the end of the year, the the fund bound did decrease about $400,000. But again, I think well in line with the Watershed District's plans, and I don't think anything stands out as a big issue there. Wrong side, there we go. Last slide we do have is to just show kind of, as we pull everything together, just know we've discussed with budgets and revenues and expenditures, I think it's nice to look at. Just the overall cash balance, what's in the bank, what's been in the bank over the past three years and looking at trends. So. You know, I think overall, it's actually when you take into account all the activity that happens year over year, the consistency over that cash and investments balance. Again, it's decreased a little bit. But again, I think overall staying in that $8 to $78 million range, and I think nothing, again, in a in a big swing one way or the other. So I think that kind of signifies some consistency there. So. With that, I will, any questions that anybody has? That is the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Justin. Manager Crafton, is there anything that you had to add?
I'm good, Mr. Crafton.
Sorry, I was muted. I had a good conversation with Justin. I don't know, three or four weeks ago, about any liabilities or concerns, and. We went through things and no, so I don't really have anything to add. I was really pleased that we have a clean, unmodified. Report, so I think we're in good standing.
Any other managers have questions?
Yeah, Mr. President, well, go ahead, Manager Pedersen.
Thank you. Justin, I saw that you had a bunch of changes to Gatsby. And I'm wondering, out of all the ones that you've listed there, which ones do you feel are the very most important for us to ensure we've got some changes on for next year?
Sure, I think the only one to really keep in mind, you know, we. We do like to list all of them that are. And there are, they've been busy, I guess would be a good way to to put it. The one to really keep in mind that we've kind of been warning all our clients about would be the Gatsby 87 lease standard. I don't know exactly how many leases, you know, Riley has, but that would be one to to consider just compiling a list of leases and making sure those agreements are. Kind of segregated in one place. So when we come to next year's audit, that we can do our testing of those leases. There's been a big, again, just that that is the biggest change. Again, in our world, I suppose that's going to be coming coming through next year is kind of changing or redefining what a lease looks like and how we account for those. So having just an inventory of those is what we're really learning people about.
Okay, thank you.
You got it.
Are you finished, Manager?
I am.
Mr. President, if I may continue?
Yes, Manager Cook.
Yes, thank you. So first of all. I don't know if there was a problem with communications, but according to everything that I have, I sent out an email. On June 16th in response to your response of June 15th regarding my earlier email on issues, and I'm sorry, I'm looking to the side because my screen is there. I did not find any response to my June 16th email. And I've tried to follow up with. Mr. Jeffrey and, you know, had not gotten a response until this morning. Couple of things, so I'll go through a few things, but. I noticed in the response that you did provide me that. You said you were going to be making, you know, some changes, but I didn't see us receiving any revised. Audit report. Were we sent a revised audit report?
No, we have not sent a revised report yet.
Okay, so secondly, one of the big questions that I did raise, what had to do with the Duck Lake obligation, if you. Had a chance to look at that and consider that in connection with the audit.
We have, we've looked at the agreement. I think that our stance on the agreement is that it is an agreement to pay, not an outstanding commitment or outstanding liability or debt-related obligation. So that's kind of what we've determined. We can certainly relook at it. Next year, if we get additional information, but that's kind of our analysis.
Did Mr. Jeffrey provide you with a copy of the agreement that we entered into with the city?
He did, yep.
And you don't, and so your opinion is that that does not. Set up an obligation to make payments in the future?
From an audit perspective, no. Mainly, if if we were to communicate with the city of Eden Prairie, I think the main reason is that they wouldn't consider it as a receipt or a long-term obligation to receive either. So that would. Be one. One way of looking at it. So I think that that's. There's, there is a lot that went into our decision, I suppose, but that's that's our response.
Did you even, did you provide any footnote as to that item?
We did, we didn't, I, we have not replied any responses yet, no.
And did you inquire Eden Prairie how they viewed that obligation?
We have not.
Okay. I'd also made a comment that, you know, the MDA, as I understand it, is basically our position. You audit the financials and you provide audited financial statements, but the MDA. MDA is basically our, by our, I mean the district statement of how it views things and sit in certain parameters. That's, you know, one area where it seems to me that the discussion of Duck Lake. You know, would be appropriate, but more importantly. I I stated two things. One, the statement as to what, I don't forget what the name is, but balance sheet. You know, on that basis, I think should be as as detailed as the audited one, because when we do a comparison. The public should be able to know or see exactly how one year compared to the other for the same line items as are contained in the actual audited. Whatever you call it, balance, you know, I call it the balance sheet. They're just different names. So, you know, and I don't see any reason why that couldn't be repeated. Did you include a more detailed balance sheet in the MDA?
We have not, no. And I would agree with you that it is the district's documentation. So if there's anything that needs to be included separately or differently, we're happy to include it if it gets sent to us.
Okay, so then let's go to the, let's talk about the. I call it the income statement. And I know there's another name, excuse me, I'm not good at remembering names. On the basis. I don't know, but I think if you interviewed most citizens, the income statement. Would be very confusing. I find it confusing. And I suggested that, at least in the MDA. That we turn the income statement from the audit into something that. Our citizens can understand, which is the normal form of an income statement, and then we can provide them with comparisons. Because without comparisons, how can they determine whether or not we're doing better, worse, you know, et cetera? So, you know, my position was that, but I got no response on it. So now we're the day before. And I suggested that be included. Well, it should be this year and should be, you know, going forward, as far as I'm concerned. The other issue that, well, I raised several other issues, but let me go to the. I think maybe the one that is most concerning to me, and I've raised this not only last year, but this year is. In the, in the footnotes, there is no statement of the basis for the recitation of the policies of the district. And as you may recall, I believe you were in at least one Zoom call, et cetera. There was a discussion about this, the fact that, at least at that time, no substantiation was a, was available for the. Fiscal policies that were recited with with a couple of exceptions. And that, in fact, as at that meeting, I circulated what I had proposed for a recit for our policies to be. And if my understanding on that meeting, and I think we certainly get a recording of that, but that Mr. Jeffrey is supposed to circulate that. Proposed fiscal policies and, at least to my knowledge. They weren't circulated because they didn't come before the. At least as far as I can tell, before the audit committee nor the managers nor, and I'm going to assume they weren't circulated back to you, Mr. Nelson. Is that true?
That's, by understanding, yes.
Okay, okay, very good thing. So on that basis, you know, I guess my position is, as it was last year. That there is no basis for a lot of the. Statements as to our policies and footnotes, and we certainly had plenty of time to do that, and we didn't do that. So. I don't see how I'm going to be able to vote to approve this version. Since we have the same deficiency as we had last year, and we had ample time to to address that, that issue. Let me just see if there are other pertinent comments I can make right now. As I said, you know. I, in my view, at least a footnote and a comment should be made with regarding to the $1.25 million commitment on Duck Lake. We can ask Eden Prairie what they would think if we didn't pay that, but. Maybe that would be telling as to what is supposed to be done, and then that would also be telling to to us as to whether or not what we would do with respect to any invoices going forward for that. For that project. So, like, give me one second. I just want to scroll back through my comments here. Those are all my comments. I think that we can address it this time. Oh, excuse me, one last one. I apologize. The state auditor requires the. Legal review or legal checklist. Did you, what did you do in order to respond to the legal checklist? Or what did your firm do?
We pulled those reports and they were sent and inquired of, I believe, Manager Crafton. With our inquiry, and they were, I guess, sent with the intent of sending to the Board of Managers.
Okay, well, just for your information, I never received that. And I bring that up because that was a point of discussion in the prior 2020 years discussion. I think it's hard for you to report something where. You don't have a basis upon which to actually make the report, or at least it seems to me would be an incomplete basis for making that report. So. That's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Any motion?
I'd like to move acceptance of the report.
We have a motion by Manager Crafton. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, by Manager Pedersen. Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
I, for the record, I just repeat all of my comments. I don't believe we should be approving this report since, especially since we did not see. A final draft of the report after changes have been made to it and for all the other reasons that I have pointed out.
Okay, um, if we have a roll call vote, who's gonna take it? I don't.
I could. Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
No.
Manager Pedersen.
Yes.
President Ziegler.
Yes.
3-1. Vote carries.
Okay, so. Manager Cook.
Mr. President, if I could just request that I receive a copy of the reporting of this meeting, please.
Yep, we can make that available, dear.
Thank you.
So, um, with regards to the Duck Lake obligation to Eden Prairie, can staff take a look at that and see what Eden Prairie is doing so we know we're consistent? With their.
President Ziegler, I can reach out to. Public Works. Director, Robert Ellis, speak to him, love it.
President Ziegler?
Yes, Manager Crafton.
So I think that we had had this discussion before, probably maybe when President Ward was still with us, but. It was just a straightforward, we were going, we were obligated, or we said that we would pay a certain amount for that project. And that it was divided into five equal payments over five years. So it's pretty straightforward. We know exactly. What's in the budget and what's, what's, you know, what our obligations are to pay it. So. I'm not sure where the. Where the confusion is, because I thought that was pretty straightforward, and I thought we had already had this discussion previously last year.
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
Well, first of all. We had discussion about whether or not to obligate the, this is my recollection, obligate the district. For that amount of money. That was decided. There was no discussion, to my recollection, regarding. How this was going to be reported on the financials. And if it is as simple as Manager Crafton says, then it seems to me there's no reason not to include it in the. Financials, or at least at a minimum, a footnote to the financials and at a minimum, a discussion in the MDA. So. I mean, you've already, that we, that we are. The majority of the managers have already accepted the audit reports, so I'm not sure actually the relevancy of this, of the further discussion.
So, um, I think that going forward for the budget and next year's audit. We should make sure that we're on the same page with Eden Prairie as far as reporting on the amount. I mean, we have an agreement that's written and signed by both parties. But exactly how to report the obligation of the watershed. Apparently, given. Mr. Nelson's comments, we should be doing it consistently with the city. So if they're reporting it as a. What do we call it, a delayed income?
It's more of a, just an agreement to pay or a budgetary item versus a long-term commitment, or a. Again, from an accounting perspective, it comes into whether or not it's actually a binding long-term debt, and based on the agreement and what we've reviewed, it wouldn't be a long-term debt item. And I certainly don't disagree with the comment of a footnote in the MDA. And again, I think it comes into. Just receiving what we should be putting in, where we should be putting it in the management discussion now, because, because. Again, I would agree that it's the Watershed District's. Document, I think from an auditing perspective and audit firm perspective. Our firm does probably more. Than other firms, we provide a pretty strong, what we call a shell or, you know, a numbered document for organizations. Which is again meant to be reviewed and updated by any government organization. And if there's anything that they would like added, removed, changed, or whatnot. We're certainly happy to do that if we receive it. So. Go ahead.
Probably plan on that for next year. To add that as a footnote.
For sure. Yep, I think, I think that would be a good idea.
Okay. So those were all the questions and comments I had. I think this was the only item on our agenda, so I'm not sure if there's anything more, Terry, that we need to cover.
President Ziegler, no, that that was the only item on the agenda.
So I moved, we adjourned the meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, Terry, can we have a roll call vote?
Yes, Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Yes.
Manager Pedersen.
Yes.
President Ziegler.
Yes.
Or zero to adjourn.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Go out and enjoy the beautiful day.
Thank you.
Have a good holiday. Thanks, Amy.
Thank you, thanks.
Thanks.